Counsel at this time, any changes to the agenda? So the next would be the citizens' comments. Members of the public wishing to address the city council will be given the same time allotment for comment three minutes as is normally allowed for meetings, subject to the provision of Executive Order and 08-21. As special meetings, members of the public wishing to address the council for any matters on the agenda may do so at this time. Note, under provision of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking action. On any item on the agenda, comments are normally limited to three minutes. Please note, under California Government Code Section 54954.3 of Perine, the Brown Act, special meetings' agenda need only provide an opportunity for the members of the public to directly address the legislative body concerning any items that have been describing the meeting agenda before or during consideration of the item. The public will have an opportunity to comment on matters not on the agenda at regular scheduled council meetings. The two items we have for closed session is item number one, public employee dismissal, release, Government Code Section 54957; number two, public employee appointment, Government Code 54957, intern city manager. So it will be open for citizens' comments at this time.
Good evening, counsel. We all know what's on the agenda. It is very disappointing that Tuesday's meeting came into the possible action taken tonight, but we all know it's a foregone conclusion what the decision is going to be. There's no doubt in our mind. All I can say to each and every--
Can we please be respectful when people are up here? Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mayor Port, did I say something wrong?
No, you're not. They're reading their phones, so that's--
Okay. Yeah, so please, I think everybody owes it to us. Put your phones away. You're not supposed to be getting texts right now anyway, because if you do, you have to show it to the public. We know the rules. So, anyway, getting back to where I was at. We know where we're at and how we got here. I can't, there's nothing I think any of the citizens here are going to do to persuade your already made up decision. So all I can do is appeal to you guys, to you, Maria, Ms. Soto over here, right here, Maria, right here, to you, I ask. I'm not sure what changed from January to now, but you had always spoken highly of Mr. Ramirez. And Jose, we never served together, but I know what your feelings are, the city does too, the citizens. And Gangandip, I know your feelings as well. You know that, and I know that. For sake of the community, I know Juan was here, but I would talk to him too. For the sake of the community, guys, don't tear this community apart by the decision tonight. There's no hurry to do it today. You have, based on the email we got, you have an acting city manager. I believe her name's Ms. Porteau, very capable. There's no hurry. If the council has differences of opinion, or difference, whatever it is, with the city manager, or former city manager, whatever you want to call it at this point, please sit down, work it out. If you have to get a conflict resolution kind of type of team, get it. We've had, other cities have had where city managers had issues with their council, and that happens everywhere. It's always best to find the solution than to tear it apart. Now, everybody counts numbers, politicians no different. If you truly believe that these thirty-some people are the only yet, think about the thirty people that are here. Vast majority of them were supporters of Councilwoman Soto, and are supporters, or were supporters of Mayor Aguilar. They're here. They were their supporters at one time. Something changed. This is not any political thing. This is something they're really concerned about. So please, Gangandip, Raul, Maria, Jose, and if Juan, if you're streaming this, come back. Don't make this very difficult decision, harder on the community. Don't tear it apart. Show leadership, show resolve, show that you're above petty politics and that you can take care of the city, the sixteen thousand people out there, not just four or five that have hurt feelings, or three feelings, whatever it is, resolve it. We will all stand behind you guys. If you guys do work through some sort of conflict management place, take a retreat, go out to Bass Lake, wherever you guys want. Way from the city, way from the citizens, work it out. You guys can do it. We know, I know you guys, I know your capabilities. So please, make the right decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Floripes. Yo vivo, yo vivo casi, desde que vine de México toda mi vida aquí he vivido en Livingston. Ahorita no me gusta lo que está pasando, ¿verdad? Por eso estoy acá. El martes que estuvo la junta acá, para mí, lo que hicieron los concejales, María Soto, el señor García, el abogado de aquí de la ciudad, y el señor, los concejales, y el, el city mayor, Juan Aguilar, se me hizo una falta de respeto como nos trataron, que no nos dieron una buena explicación, y ustedes saben que lo hicieron muy mal. Para las personas que no tuvieron tiempo de mirar el video, vayan y miren el video cómo nos trataron. Quiero decirles, lo dije en Merced Sun Star, y se los digo aquí enfrente de ustedes, ¿verdad? Cómo yo me siento, como les he dicho, yo he vivido toda mi vida acá. Ustedes piensan así como nos trataron, ¿con qué? ¿Con qué yo voy a venir a decirles, a quejarles un problema aquí de la ciudad? ¿Con qué cara voy a venir y ustedes me van a ayudar? Ustedes no me van a poder ayudar a mí sola. Si aquí estuvimos más de treinta personas apoyando aquí al señor Antonio, José Antonio Ramírez, y no nos están escuchando, ¿cómo yo voy a entender que a mí sola me van a escuchar? Entonces yo quisiera que lo siguieran tomando en cuenta, ¿verdad? Porque como miraron, no nos vamos a quedar, no estamos contentos, y no nos vamos a quedar callados. Vamos a ir hasta las últimas consecuencias para traer, para atrás al señor José Antonio Ramírez. ¿Por qué? Porque la comunidad lo quiere, la comunidad lo pide, no solo yo. Gracias.
The young lady was just saying that she was not happy with last council meeting, and there's people here, and that they were here, supporting Mr. Ramirez, and that our behavior on that day was unacceptable, and stating, or she states, how is she supposed to come face us and ask for help if we can't give you guys an explanation? Thank you and respect.
What the citizen said is that it was very disrespectful the way that she was treated by the city council, and how the city council and Mr. Aguilar allowed the city lawyer to treat those with disrespect. She doesn't feel that she can come over here and have anything done or any help for the city manager, I'm sorry, for the city mayor and the side council, with exception of Juan José Moran, because they were disrespectful. If you didn't help or listen to a crowd of more than thirty people, how she expect for you guys to listen to her? So that is what she said.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello. Okay. So according to Section 54952 of the Brown Act, the requirements of the Brown Act apply to legislative bodies of local government agencies. Livingston City Council is a local government agency. But on Tuesday, July 20, 2021, Section 54954.3 of the Brown Act was violated when city attorney cut off members of the community coming forward to comment on the item of the agenda regarding to the city manager. The same Tuesday, July 20, Section 54957.1 of the Brown Act was violated when the legislative body did not report on specified closed-section actions and the vote taken on those actions. Contracts, settlements, agreements, or other documents that are finally approved or adopted in closed session must be provided at the time the closed session ends to any person who has made a standing request for all documents and to any person who makes a request within twenty-four hours of the posting of the agenda. I strongly urge the council to correct these violations, as the items on today's agenda would not be present had those violations not been made. It is in the best interest of the city of Livingston to pursue civil remedies and/or criminal penalties for Brown Act violations committed by the city council according to Section 54960.1. Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't think I was that much taller than her. All right. My name is Fernando Reynoso. I founded the Third Hour Collective. It's an art collective. I'm just a humble musician. I don't know about much. But I've witnessed something really tragic happen to my city. This is pretty much all that I have, is my city, my love for my city, because it's not made up of the people that sit here in front of me. They represent the people that sit in front of them. This lawyer right here is dismissive as hell. He rolls his eyes, he has an attitude right now looking at me. Look at his face, yeah! Thank you. All right. So you're a self-fulfilling prophecy of yourself, sir. You're a self-fulfilling prophecy of yourself. No, please.
Excuse me, can we please respect one another as we're in here? Thank you.
I felt disrespected and I said that. All right. So after I felt dismissed--
Tell me exactly how my face needs to look.
There's an outrage in this city right now, and this is silly. We're all adults. This guy's an adult, you, maybe, you're an adult, you're an adult. Why are we playing games? You guys know what you did. You guys withheld information from people. Why? The guy waved his right. He could have, you guys could have done the evaluation here. But you didn't want to air out those details because one person that happens to agree with some business owner from Merced says you can't say anything. I'm just disappointed, I guess. I don't know.
Any more citizens' comments in the public here?
Hello, all. So first of all, I think you guys chose a Friday early to get the least amount of people here for you guys, for us to be here to support our cause. I think that wasn't right either, but you guys are doing whatever you can, or whatever you want now, since you're getting rid of those people that oppose what you want to do. I want to have it on record, now first of all, this employee discipline dismissal on today's agenda, number one, is this for José Antonio Ramírez?
The Brown Act requires us not to put what the position is.
Okay, so whatever. If, if, if it's not about him and you're going to fire, for example, the chief of police, we know what your plan is. So the public knows what your plan is. It's no longer a secret what you guys are doing. You guys, whatever, I'll go on to the next thing. I want to ask the lawyer again, Mr. Lawyer Juan Aguilar Jr. Oh, I'm sorry, it's--
I'm just keeping the time, that's why I'm sitting here.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Your name, Mr. Lawyer.
Just trying to help out.
Yes, of course. Mr. Lawyer, I want to ask you one more time to have it on record. Is it not a conflict of interest for family members in the council to vote on items that will directly affect their family members who work for the city?
Only if it's a member of your nuclear family is it a conflict.
Okay, what is your nuclear family? Because I'm not--
Your spouse and your children.
So not your brother? Okay, so that's on record. Okay. I think you guys made the right choice by getting this lawyer. The right choice for you guys, not for us.
Catherine Shaw Rodriguez, and I think there's, can, we get three minutes? Can you put it to three, please? Catherine Shaw Rodriguez, I don't have a question about the Brown Act, but I do have a question about our city ordinance that I think you need to at least look into before you go further with any action against the city manager. Doesn't our city ordinance require thirty days, thirty days' advance notice of the council's intention to remove the city manager? And provide an opportunity for a hearing?
That's correct.
Do you have proof that you did so?
That's why I gave the report out that I did last time.
Thirty-day advance notice of the council's intentions to remove the city manager, and then an opportunity for a hearing. The city manager has already said that he would waive the rights to a closed hearing. We would like to see this as a public hearing.
If that clause is invoked, that will be up to the city manager. The code says, okay, if this is, if this happens, and I'm not saying it is, but the code says that if it does, he gets thirty days' notice, and he has the opportunity to request the hearing in public.
We can't--
Excuse me, can we please respect one another? Thank you.
It's a personnel-- It's a personnel matter, and we cannot discuss at all what has happened yet.
Can you document, can you provide a document that the thirty-day notice was provided to the city manager?
At this point, legally, we cannot say whether we provided it yet or not.
Margarita Aguilar. In addition to the questions that were partially answered, based on Lysano Smith, attorney-at-law, there's a little information here. It says, "Before holding a closed session to hear complaints or charges brought against an employee, the employee must be delivered written notice of his or her rights to complain, to hear the complaints or charges in open session at least twenty-four hours prior to the meeting." So my second question, or third question, I'm not sure which one she left on, was he, was José, our city manager, provided a twenty-four-hour notice before--
We cannot comment on that.
Of course not. It's the law. Okay. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My time is running, I don't know why.
Sorry.
All right. Good evening, mayor and council members. I would like to address some conversations I had on Wednesday, July 21, 2021, with council member Kang and García, about the city manager's evaluation. Based on conversation, I would like to clarify clarification. On Wednesday, 7/21/2021, at 9:37 a.m., I called council member Kang. At 9:55, I got the following text. "Hey, Anna, can I call you around 5?" I, Anna, responded back, "Sure." At 5:20, I sent council member Kang a message, "Hi, Kang, will you be calling now or later? Just don't want to assure I'm available." At 5:29, I received a call with Kang, and it lasted about forty-three minutes and twenty-one seconds. I answered, I answered, and the first thing I said is how I felt about the city attorney José Ramírez, on José Ramírez's closed-session item. He responded, "I honestly didn't like the way he was talking to the public, and I also didn't like the way the public responded with anger." I responded, "I, as a resident, want to ask you, are you okay with an attorney being so disrespectful and talking to me the way he did?" He mentioned, "No, I don't agree." I asked Kang to put this concern on the agenda to reevaluate him, just like he reevaluated José Ramírez. Kang responded, "Yes, I can. I can do that. We want to be able to evaluate the city manager and the city attorney at least every sixty days, but I'm only one vote." Then I asked if the city manager was fired. Kang stated he can't talk about that, but he didn't understand why people were taking it the wrong way, if it is just an evaluation. Then I asked, "So is he fired?" Kang said, "No, he is not fired. This is a process, an investigation going on, that I wish I can share with you, but I can't. The attorney will be doing a press conference, special meeting, either this Friday or Monday. Once he explains why everyone will be, once he explains why then, everyone will understand what happened, but he is not fired." Then I asked, "Oh, okay." Then, "He is on administrative leave," Kang said. "Yes, we just have to go through the process and let the investigation happen, and I can't talk about, and I can't talk about, and we will reevaluate the situation to see if we will let him go or keep him." Then I asked, "Well, can you put that on the agenda to reevaluate the city attorney, just like you did all of a sudden for the city manager?" Kang responded, "Absolutely, yes, I can do that, but, like I said, it's only one vote." I said, "Trust me, if you said you want the best for the city, there will be another person to second it, because everyone saw how unprofessional the attorney was." Kang responded, "Who do we want to--
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Can you close it up? We got three minutes, sir."
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll close it up.
Thank you.
Thank you, that was polite.
All right. Alvarez, I'm going to continue where she left off. Basically, says, "So who do you want me to ask? Or Mayor Aguilar, or Moran? I could call Raul, but he is not working." I answer, "There's no way I would want to ask our mayor after what he has done. Ask Moran, he is more equal and transparent." Kang answered, "I will call Moran, add it to the special press conference, special meeting, either Friday or Monday, and address this matter, because it's very important to me how the community feels." Then I asked, "Why is the city manager on administrative leave?" Kang said, "I wish I could tell you, but I can't. There's an investigation going on, like I said. When the attorney do that press meeting, everyone will understand why everything happened. But everyone is taken the bad way. This is just a simple follow-up evaluation, of last evaluation." Then I said, "Oh, so that they are just reevaluating his performance, but thank God he is not fired. José is an amazing person, and he does not deserve this. If the investigation goes okay," Kang said, "Correct, everything is okay, and once the investigation process is done, and the attorney talks on Friday or Monday, everything will be okay." People think that this has to do with the mayor or my brother, but I could tell you this investigation has nothing to do with me or my brother, and this recall happens, and if this recall happens in the city, residents get enough signatures, I'm just going to resign. I don't want the city to pay seventy, eighty thousand dollars for residents of Livingston don't want me here." I said, "Okay, it's, I agree. It's better for you to resign than for you to be, and for you to be a better member, and to be honest. So just put it on the agenda, please call council member Moran to see if he agrees for you to add it to a special meeting so we can speak about the situation." On Wednesday, July 21, 2021, at 9:38 a.m., I got a call from Raul García. I left the message because he didn't answer. At 8:26, I received a call from Raul García, talked it for about twenty minutes and fifty seconds. The first thing, the first thing I talked to Raul, also about the city manager meeting, I asked Raul, "How do you feel about the attorney raising and interrupting me?" I got nervous and wasn't able to say my comment correctly. "He is unprofessional and an embarrassment to our city, and have such rude attorney like him. We look like clowns all over the media," Raul responded. "Okay, so we look like clowns all over the media," Raul responded. "I can bring your concerns to the attorney?" I said, "No." "Can you request a special meeting to evaluate the attorney and possibly remove him for what he did to me and others? Are you okay with him, what he said to me, and the way he interrupted other citizens?" Here, he is here to give advice to the council members and not the mayor, not to approach the citizens directly. If they don't ask him specific questions, Raul said, "Yes, I can sure thing bring it up to the council and address that matter." "I don't agree with the way he talked to you or residents, and we could do an evaluation on him next meeting, but I can, I can't call a special meeting for that." I said, "Maybe he can be removed, he is so unprofessional." Only on his first day, Raul said, "We could possibly change attorneys, but we don't need to get rid of that firm." I said, "So Raul is the city manager? I heard he was on administrative, so is the city manager fired? I heard he was on administrative leave." Raul said, "I can't talk about that, what happened in closed session. I wish I could, but you can see the city manager's contract on the website and see the codes that it has where I can talk about it. It is a process and it's under investigation." Then we started talking about my other concerns, and how it's affecting my organization not having a city attorney.
I'm sorry, we lost track. Three minutes, can you close it up?
Yep. Well, they're going to continue.
Mr. García said, "When a city manager is no longer there, the next one you can contact is Vanessa, then chief, then the public works director. I can't say anymore, because there is a process for now. Vanessa is who you can reach out until the process moves forward to get a new city manager or assign someone. But I will meet with her tomorrow and address these concerns with her and Jackie and get back to you by Friday. So question for you, counsel García and Kang, you mentioned you only had one vote to remove or do anything with the firm. Make a motion now about this matter." And you can see both of you agree in the same concern of being unprofessional and get rid of them now. Can you put this on the next agenda? Or can you do it now?
We have already addressed that issue, so--
Okay, can I continue?
I was answering the question, thank you.
Okay. I got an impression from one conversation that José Ramírez was on administrative leave and by another member that he was no longer with us, fired or let go. Why didn't you say that on Tuesday to the public when the attorney reported out of closed session? All of this, you guys said, is on the phone with me. I received a call-- I received a call from Raul Garcia about 10 minutes ago, for 25 minutes Friday. I'm not sure if Jose is coming or not, but if he does, he can disclose why he got fired. There's no problem me telling you he got fired because it's already in the agenda. Saying there's an investigation and that you can reach out to Vanessa, onto the, they appoint the next city manager is not disclosing closed session items. Like I said, there is a process and Jose has 30 days to do what he needs to do or to get an attorney, it's on his contract. I can disclose information about closed session, but I can assure I made what it's best for the city. I will bring up and put it on the next agenda to evaluate the city. So now, Mr. Attorney, based on these conversations...
Hi, I'm Anna, and I'm the one that was in this conversation, and I have a question for you, Mr. Attorney. Based on the conversations with Kang and Mr. Garcia, if they both shared this, shared closed session information with me, why was it not reported on closed session that day? How many people have shared this information, have they shared this information with? No wonder information flies around town, even before it's discussed before the council. Can you answer my question?
No, I, I don't know what anybody else has said.
Can you explain what's the process? Is this, is this closed session information, what I, what I received? What, what I'm giving you?
I'm not gonna comment on a hypothetical question.
It's not a hypothetical, I'm asking you a question, it is?
It's a hypothetical question.
So, so everybody, I want everybody to know that I have texts, I have calls, and I knew before, everybody on Wednesday, there was gonna be a special meeting, and I got information that Jose Ramirez was on either administrative leave or he was let go, based on the conversations, that's how I took it, and I don't understand why that was not addressed on that Tuesday meeting. I am sorry, Kang, I'm sorry, Raul, but we're, you told me that we have to be outspoken and transparent, and that's what I'm doing right now. You promised me you were gonna put it on the agenda, and you were gonna call Moran, and you never did, and one of the things that I hate, and I think everybody that knows me in soccer, is I hate lies. I hate lies, because you could have done it. You could have evaluated this attorney. You, you humiliated a woman. If it was your wife, if it was your sister, you wouldn't have liked it, but it was me, somebody that has nothing to do with you or you, Mr. Garcia, and that is very a shame. I wish you told me you couldn't put it to the agenda until the next meeting, when you already knew there was gonna be a special meeting, you could have addressed it, and I spoke to you today in the morning, and I told you, you could have done it, cuz there's no reason for us to have an unprofessional attorney that was disrespecting, interrupting us like that. He raised the voice to me, it's on the record, it's on the video, and you know what? I was nervous because I don't even know what was going on. I shouldn't feel like that. I should be able to come and say, "You said, you told me you wanted to be transparent, you wanted to be the better person. Do it now. Make a motion to say, 'I wanna bring Jose Ramirez back.'" You, I got the information, he's fired, do it right now. You told me... Both of you told me that Jose Ramirez was a great guy. So if you said what you said to me on the phone, and you were not concerned, because I was on the phone and I told you I was at my daughter's practice with my husband...
Excuse me, can you close it?
Nope, she has my time.
You don't, you can't...
Yes, she can, yes, she can.
And I was with my husband, my husband was there listening to the conversation. Can you make a motion now, Mr. Kang? Can you make a motion to bring the city manager back? And I assure you that people will believe that you have nothing to do with this, and people will know that you are transparent. Can you do it, yes or no? With all respect, Mr. Kang, can you do it or not? Or you just want, don't decide not to answer my question? You say you wanna listen to the residents, and if the residents didn't want you, you wanted, you would resign. Listen to our, we are the residents. Somebody said, "I work for the rest, the citizens of Livingston, not for some people that get anger, angry at the council." Show it, prove it. Can you prove it? Then, I don't understand, because I spoke to you about this information, you told me you were gonna bring it into the, the session. I knew about it, I knew about it before anybody did. It was 6 o'clock on Wednesday, and I have proof, where I sent a message at 6 o'clock to somebody I know, "Hey, there's gonna be a special meeting on Wednesday," and nobody knew, cuz I was waiting for this moment. And on these messages, it stays right here, my calls, my duration that I have. And I know you're mad at me, I understand, I would too, but you know what? It's okay, cuz I know I spoke on behalf of Jose, and I know that Jose is a great man. And I know that the word, the least thing that I want is for people to lie to me, and I asked you to not lie to me, and you did it. Again, this is not the first time. I gave you a second chance, Raul, I gave you a second chance too. Can you put on the motion to evaluate the city, the city attorney? You say you were gonna put it on the agenda, even if it was addressed. Can you put a motion now to evaluate, again, the city attorney? Yes or no? Raul, el que cae otorga, you know what that means? Right? Don't look at me with hate, look at me like a brave woman, that I'm out here speaking for somebody that has done a lot to the community, and I told you in the morning, I hate hypocrisy, I hate people that lie to me. And Monica, can I leave this for the record?
Mr. Mayor Portem, can I ask, yeah, can I ask a question to Tom?
Yeah, it's good.
Tom, so, I don't even know how to ask the question, but, um, from my point of view, there are some allegations that we don't have to discuss whether or not it is or not. There are some allegations that closed session information was released. There are allegations. What is the, what would be the protocol instead of doing nothing?
You know, I, I would have to give you that advice privately as your lawyer, that's...
Please, guys, please be respectful. Thank you.
Respect us, tell us the truth.
I need to make a point of personal privilege, Vice Mayor and Council, and I'm gonna start with the meeting from the other night. I, I was just explaining what the rules are and people didn't like it. I'm sorry. I said, "This is a city council meeting. Public comment is to be about city business, not personal business, not private political business, city business, and it's not supposed to be the Jerry Springer Show and everybody gets to say whatever they want. That's not how the rules work." I said that, and everybody's mad about it, I'm sorry. And I'm just telling you the rules as they are, I've done this for 27 years, there's no reason I would come and start lying to the city of Livingston at this point in my career. I'm just saying, the way things are, I'm sorry. We'll continue, you know, if, when we go back in closed session and we come out, I'm gonna report out according to the rules. Now, I can't give legal advice to people as we sit here. Again, I represent this, sit, all of the citizens of Livingston through their elected city council, not people in the audience at a particular meeting. That's how it works.
So, can, continue? Can we continue with citizens' comments, please? Go ahead, thank you.
Good evening, Council. Um, you know, it's very clear and apparent that much of the community, including myself, feels that there has been a lot of disrespect going on. Clearly, the council feels that it's been, you know, both ways, um, but, you know, I wanna give kudos to Kang and, um, councilmember Kang and Mayor Portem Garcia, and Jose Moran as well. You know, you guys have composed yourself very well despite any, um, you know, harsh criticism you guys have received, and, you know, that's not always been the case. It's unfortunate that someone that you guys assigned to represent you, being the city manager, cannot rise to the same level of professionalism that you guys have displayed tonight. If any of the conversation, I'm not saying it's true, I'm not saying it's not true, that was had between, um, the council members and the citizen that spoke previous to me is true, um, then, you know, I'm, I'm really asking that you guys will take into consideration that this man is not only disrespecting us, but he is violating our civil liberties. He, by silencing individuals that came up to speak, he is violating our rights as citizens, and that should be ta, that shouldn't be taken lightly, especially from someone in law enforcement. I ask that you guys really consider that, especially if it is something that, um, you know, the city attorney's employment is going to be taken into consideration. I ask that you guys keep that in mind, because, um, you know, especially Mayor Portem Garcia, I really doubt that you want anybody's rights violated, and should the American Civil Liberties Union find that that has happened, I would hope that you guys would be on the right side of history. Thank you.
Okay, Council, this question is for Mr. Attorney. So the question is, can you explain what kind of violations have Kang and Garcia committed, committed by sharing the privileged information with Ms. Anna? And will there be an investigation?
Well, no, because, first of all, I'm not gonna just, if you respond to something like that, it makes it sound like it's true, and that would be the biggest offense possible, so, no.
Okay, okay, that's all, that's all the questions I had.
Anybody else from the public? Anybody on the phone?
Oh, I have... I have an email from Jimmy Mejia. It says, "Good evening, Mayor and Council. The question I have is why doesn't the city clerk do her job?" Sorry. "Why does the city have, city have staff doing all her work when she is an elected official that doesn't perform her duties? Does she have excuse absences as she sits in the audience making a spectacle of herself? Doesn't she fall under the code of ethics? She is a poor representation of the city. Thank you, Livingston Mayor and Council."
Was that the only one?
I'm sorry.
Was that the only?
That was the only email.
So we're gonna be going into closed session now, thank you. Citizens' comments are closed.
Reporting out for us tonight.
Thank you, our mayor and council, all of...
[inaudible]
Yes?
Anna, did it?
Can I proceed?
[inaudible]
What was that again?
[inaudible]
Is it on?
Let me know when I can start.
You're good to go? Back there? Oh. Oh. Who has it back there? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'll go in a reverse order regarding the interim city manager item. The council voted unanimously to avoid appoint Vanessa Portillo as the interim city manager. On the discipline dismissal release pursuant to Livingston Title I, Chapter 6, Section 8, the city council directed me to proceed with termination of the city manager with cause. And the vote was four to one, excuse me, with councilmember Moran dissenting. Thank you.